This conference will now be recorded.
You ready, Mike? We're ready whenever you are, sir. You call the session, you order, uh, Arlene, if you call it over.
Ladyman.
Here.
Here.
Gotham.
Here.
Harvard.
Here.
Did you sign?
Here.
Cross.
Here.
Well, sir, can you get in one?
Here. Ty Ketchum, Andy Gordon, China, what was that for city? Ty is going to the directors of meeting tonight, Ty?
Captain, my name is Ty Ketchum, and I'm here on the city today. We're here today in connection with the appeal of the suspension of a business license for the Econolot, three oh five, three five oh one West, Pelican Broadway.
Broadway.
Yeah. Um, and so today we'll, or tonight, we'll have the hearing. Um, and I think, Mr. Spangler, if you want to give us some opening remarks, I'd be happy to go after you.
Well, that's fine.
That's fine with me, too. Are you going to call witnesses first?
Well, my understanding is you are going to stand up. We can start. That's fine. Go ahead. Thank you very much. Let me start, please. That's today. Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Then would you tell your name, please?
Peggy Bay.
All right. May I? And what is your occupation?
Government, so, in town, and it's directed by the city of today.
Right. How long have you held that position?
Um, about three weeks.
All right. What did you do before that?
I led the child manager, um, for the last two and a half years.
Okay. Uh, before, what, three weeks ago or something, have you, did you have experience on city licenses, issuing them, or setting up notices, or suspension, or relocation?
Um, yes.
Right? And how, how far back was that experience going?
Um, I've been with the city for the last twenty years, and I've been dealing with it.
Okay. I'm going to show you what's been marked as exhibit F. This is a letter that you authored October seventh, twenty twenty, is that correct?
Correct.
And in this letter, you purport to suspend your revocably business license of high-line KCP House, is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Uh, in your letter, let me ask you first, um, do you yourself have any background in engineering, architecture, anything like that?
No.
Have you yourself ever inspected the hotel?
No.
Uh, your letter, exhibit F, Benjamin's, an inspection on October two of twenty twenty, do you see that?
Yes.
Okay. Did you attend that inspection?
No.
There was another meeting out at the hotel. I was there, Brittany Hindren, and the state was there, the local folks were there, including Captain Shaw. Uh, were you with that meeting?
No.
There was another meeting out there today, one thirty, with this Hindren, and city folks, with your Shaw, you never heard of that?
No.
Have you received any updated reports from anyone since you authored this letter?
No.
Okay? So you don't know what the current state of the hotel completion is, would that be fair?
Correct.
Now, you, you mentioned an inspection on October two of twenty twenty. Was there some type of report that was given to you?
No.
Right? So if you have it here, there was inspection on October second, twenty twenty, there could be no dispute that suspension completion is not being achieved. So would it be true to say that you don't have any personal knowledge of whether that's a correct statement or not? Because you've never been there, you know, arbitrate, anything like that.
Correct.
So did somebody instruct you to write this letter?
Um, it was brought down by, I have help as well, and he asked me to agree with it, and I agreed with the letter, upon his platform.
Okay. Uh, what were you provided by Mr. Shaw to agree with this agreement?
Uh, I had relied upon the letters, with their information, for the.
Okay. Can you detail post what that is?
Um, I don't know how we can, but it could.
Okay. All right. So did you actually type this letter up, prepare the content of the letter, or did someone prepare it for you to sign?
Um, it was prepared with me as well.
You prepared it for you to sign? Oh, someone? All right. So let me ask you there, the, the city, and we had a fire here, you know, we know about this, or the fire, I think, April twenty.
April twenty seventh.
April twenty seventh, yeah. A fire, thank you. And there, there was a discussion about some inspections of the property before the fire at the hotel, which was in January of this year. Okay? Uh, when you were doing any of the licensure work with the city, to your knowledge, has the city ever suspended or revoked the hotel's licensure, or even threatened to do that before the fire of this year?
Not currently.
So even though there may have been some inspection reports in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen pertaining to the hotel, they've never resulted in the city taking action to revoke or suspend the license of the hotel, is that a true statement?
Yeah.
That's all, thank you very much.
Miss Bay, I just have a couple of questions for you. Um, is it true that with respect to the ordinance at the city of today that talks about suspending business license, that, that, uh, that suspension will actually come from someone within your department?
Yes.
Um, and I assume, and I think you've already testified, that you're not an engineer, you're not an expert with respect to the fire code, correct?
Yes.
Okay? And so as it pertains to suspending any business licenses in a situation like this, where, um, the business owner, here at the Econolot, is actually violating the fire code, you have to rely upon someone else for that, correct?
Correct.
All right. And in connection with executing this letter and sending it to the owners of the Econolot, you rely upon Kelvin Sampson, Kelvin Shaw, excuse me, uh, but you also relied upon the work that has been done by the city of today, the fire department, et cetera.
Yes.
That's all I have.
In one specific, like, can you tell us that you reviewed the fire? What's that?
I have not reviewed any of that.
And you haven't reviewed any of these inspection reports? Did, did you know that since the fire, that there had been regular inspections, I think almost weekly during a period of time, at the hotel by the fire departments?
I knew that we were doing inspections.
Have, have you actually seen any of those reports, though?
No.
So it would really be fair to say that your design of the letter that Mr. Kelvin Shaw prepared was based upon, and asked you to prepare it, of design, actually?
Um, yes, I agree with the, the, the background.
Okay.
I think that's.
If you don't tell me the detailed background?
Correct.
Thank you, that's all.
The only thing I would add, Miss Bay, you knew the fire department was involved in some way, shape, correct?
Yes.
All right. That's all right.
And not enough to beat this into the ground, but, uh, you went out there today, with the police, the building people, the fire departments, the sprinkler people, who were there, current staffs, a little.
Right. No, no.
And while we've got her here, why don't we go ahead, and I think we can stipulate to this. Mr. Spangler, let's put, uh, we, I think we've already put the October seventh, twenty twenty letter in evidence. Can we put the, uh, section twelve dash thirty-one, the, the ordinance in question, in evidence as well?
Yeah, I have the mark on it, and you actually, it was in your package, so it is. I don't offer you the hotel and the.
No objection.
Sure.
And, and you know, while, while we've got Miss Bay here, um, let's go ahead. I, my exhibit one is the business license itself. I see you don't have any objections, Mr. Spangler.
Well, I agree with you, no.
So exhibit one, we've been.
Excuse me, for the benefit of me keeping track of exhibits, have to help, Ms. Robert, the number of exhibits are going to be from the city, and the letter of exhibits are going to be from you, Mr. Spangler.
That is correct. And you still have a bit of revision?
I thought we did it, but I wanted to make sure it was going kind of fast.
That is correct. I want to show the things. Shoots. Thank you. Okay, sure.
I'm aware of a firm that's about to use the day to hopefully.
I didn't. Sort of, uh, just taking a name, please. Name, if you want. And what was your occupation, sure?
I am a captain today, fire department, with the heat streaming intervention.
You have since the fire of January of this year, you have been out to the perimeter on multiple occasions.
Yes.
And I think the, the city is currently going to offer into evidence a bunch of inspection reports, and since the fire, uh, these inspection reports have been completed, correct?
Yes, we've completed inspections in several.
And in, in, counsel, you see, the reports say that when inspections were done, there were certain things that were inspected, and it was half a fail. Right? And so as we sit here today, as far as those inspection reports, has everything been corrected that was marked as a fail?
Yes.
There is. We'll talk about this. I'm going to show you, this is actually something that I was providing, uh, to everyone in the city, something large as exhibit twelve, I think it might look, it'll be in text, twelve, actually. And you had, uh, so exhibit twelve is a type of letter that's copied on the back side. This is something that you prepared, okay? And who did you share this information with?
Uh, city leadership.
Okay? Can you be more specific? It might be tough, folks.
I don't recall specifically who it all was.
Was it email?
Yes.
Okay. Could you give me the name of one person, the leadership, to who that was made of? Andy Gordon? Okay? Anyone else? That was one name? Okay? I'll try it out. Any other names? How about Kelvin Shaw, your father?
Yes.
Yeah. I didn't, uh, understand if you're under oath to tell us any of any other persons that you sent us.
I believe that there were thirty-four people in this thing, but I don't recall exactly the names.
You, you have had an email somewhere, or it was, it was, Doc, and you, you not asking to say that, of course, okay?
Absolutely.
So does this pertain to an inspection that you performed on October second?
That is correct.
Was anyone with you at that time?
Uh, October second, I believe we had myself, uh, chief building officials, Devin Lake. I believe you were there, uh.
Was not there. Was there on the thirteenth? I forgot about that.
Okay.
You meant, uh.
I believe Neil Hornet was there as well. Uh, the owners? That's all I recall.
Good. So as a part of exhibit twelve, you have something, you put together, it's kind of like an area, it's called overview. Like, sure. Uh, said, will we be up top? Yes, sir. But I'm thinking. You're in the wrong position.
Hey, dude? Uh, you're glad we're there, aren't you? You screwed up, so a little bit, I'm sorry. Okay?
This one's over there. Okay. Where I started with the fourth micro, no, I mean, is something that you called overview. So I'm going to, you counsel, I should copy it. I'm just going to mark this as exhibit I, just for our implication, you can see there. See where I marked it here?
Okay.
So, and, and, all right. So in your, your overview, exhibit I, it shows an aerial of the hotel. We have the west wing, we have the lobby, we have the south wing, east wing, and then the areas in the far east, which is labeled as the tenant space, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So you did an inspection on the second. Now, on October thirteenth, there was a meeting out there. Uh, you were present, I was present, uh, this lady was present, for sure, uh, then, uh, the lady from the city Missouri Department, uh, Health and Safety Services, Brittany Hindren, and one of her fellow employees were there for that meeting, correct?
I believe so.
And at the time of that meeting, uh, the gentleman, the superintendent of the Sprinkler and Fire Alarm Project, the guy named Marty, whose last name escapes me at the moment, and we know it, from light recharge, correct?
Yes, I agree.
And, and Marty was present, uh, for that meeting, and he gave us an update about the status of the Sprinkler and Fire Alarm system, correct?
That's correct.
Uh, we met out there again today, one thirty, with the same cast of characters, correct?
Correct.
And, uh, Marty gave us an update about, uh, uh, another update about the Sprinkler alarm system, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you took some written notes on that, just like I did?
Yes.
Okay. And as I understood what Marty had to say, that the, certainly, all of the hotel, and I understood the hotel, entire hotel, including the tenant space, but we'll leave that out for a minute. As of next Thursday, the entire hotel should be properly equipped within the codes for Sprinkler and Fire Alarm, correct?
I'll just, from the fact, I'll just object to your saying. So what, I don't know, I mean, do you typically have a mandate, you make a ruling on those types of judgments?
Well, you can, but my understanding is, all it all comes in anyway.
Right.
You just make notes, notes that you say.
You ever think that question on? Sure. Let me, let me back up a little bit. When we were out there today, Marty told us that the Sprinkler alarms have to be air-tested, right?
Yes.
And, and then after they're air-tested, they have to be pressure water-tested, correct?
Yes, hydro-tested.
Hydro-tested, thank you. And the hydrotesting is scheduled for ten o'clock next Thursday, a week from tomorrow, is that correct?
Yes.
And we all make notes about it, because we were supposed to be there, correct?
Correct.
And the hydrotesting is part of it, and then he's also requested that you go ahead, at that time appropriate, to go ahead and certify the alarm system in connection with the hydrotesting, correct?
I guess he is looking for, uh, final acceptance, testing for the alarm set.
All right. And he covered, in fact, he got out blueprints and things like that, that you can look at, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so when we were done meeting with him, then you were satisfied with what he had said as far as what needs to be done between today and next Thursday? For the fire safety standpoint?
Would be this objective, the question, satisfied, I'm not, I'm sure what that means in context, also, um, the understanding, the objections will be dealt with by the circuit court if necessary, or go ahead.
So I would say that I understood what was presented to you.
Okay. And so my follow-up question is, you understood what he presented to you, and from doing the job that you're doing, code enforcement, process of fire safety aspect, you agree and are satisfied of what he was going to do between today and next Thursday, assuming he passed the pressure test, et cetera, was going to meet the code?
The entire property will not be, uh, have a full Sprinkler and alarm system dependent. Uh, what I understood of his presentation was that the hotel portion of this, to exclude the tenant space, should be ready for hydrotesting and, uh, alarm certification.
Right. And, and people don't rent out rooms in the tenant space, correct? That's, that, that area is, is open for commercial development, right?
Currently, the tenant space.
Yeah. But that area has never been guest rooms, true?
No, why not?
And it's not, and, and of course, you've been out there and seen the plans, it's not going to be set up for guest rooms, correct?
Correct. Well, actually, let me reiterate that, the way that, and the plan that was in it right now, is, is a vacant space with no walls, it's just what we call a white house.
And, and as it sits right now, there's no danger of safety with people within the tenant space, because that's not occupied space.
Correct. I would disagree with that.
Right. And why would you disagree with that?
There is nothing separating as far as the firewall between the tenant space and the hotel set, therefore, fire can progress from the tenant space to the hotel set.
The areas where tenants would be located within the building, the west wing, the east wing, the south wing, would be safe next Thursday if someone's passed the test, correct?
I disagree with that, so.
Why is that?
Uh, he said that east wing would be safe, and still currently have a reception.
Okay. You're not talking about from the Sprinkler, I'm going to talk about that, from the Sprinkler standpoint and the alarm system, let me change my question. Next Thursday, it could hydrotest probably the alarms with product. If there are tenants in the west wing, they'll be able to get their life, life support firearms.
I believe I can answer that question with a question.
Okay. Well, and I have to ask you hypothetically, because it's not Thursday, and I probably don't have another meeting, but the result of the meeting today, that Marty indicated to invite us Thursday, and they had a air test, and we're going to have a hydrotest that day, we're going to have the alarm system ready to be inspected, right?
That is what I'm saying.
Okay? And if that comes to pass next Thursday, then occupancy of the west wing, the south wing, and the watten, for that matter, would be safe for hotel guests from the fire scene, but you would need help, correct?
If you have the completely compliant for a system of an MVA thirteen R, and a alarm system that is compliant with an MVA seventy-two, would you allow that to pass?
And will you surely, by now, check out those, see if those ones could be?
Now, the entire work is uncompleted, and there are items like, uh, that we found today and we had forgotten about, so I can't tell you a hundred percent that the work is going to be completed that Thursday and Friday.
And you mentioned, you're saying, should it be associated with something?
An MVA seventy-two government alarm system?
Right.
And MVA thirteen government Sprinkler systems, but in a specific account, it will be adhered to an R system, uh, because that's what falls into this particular.
And if you never viewed the plans that they put together, would the Sprinkler system and the alarm system, correct?
Yes.
And if they're constructed in accordance with those two plans and those two standards, then they would be out of code, correct?
That is correct.
And what you're saying is, you, you want to inspect that Thursday to make sure that all of the things are done, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, you mentioned the east wing. Let's talk about that. The, the fire in January, as far as structural damage to the hotel, was primarily, not almost exclusively, the area where the owners lived, correct? As far as actual fire damage, I'm not talking about smoking, I'm talking about damage to walls and things from fires that need to be reconstructed.
Direct fire damage, yes, deep smoke damage, and of course.
Correct. And, and so as far as actual construction, when I'm talking about actual construction, I'm talking about two-by-fours and sheet rock, and new ceilings and that type of thing, the, the construction that is ongoing right now is really limited to rebuilding the area where the fire occurred, which was where the owners resided, not tenant rooms, correct?
Uh, there's something that's occurring between east wing and tenant space as well as there that they need a Egress forty system.
Okay. But was that answer to my question, correct?
Wait, your question?
Sure. As far as, when I talk about reconstruction, and I talk about, you know, if you have a fire, and older damage, foreign damage, maybe your ceilings are damaged, and, and my question is, the damage from this fire of those type of things was all, for all intents and purposes, limited to the area that the owners lived in, as opposed to tenant rooms?
True. The fire damage area was, was in smaller, younger.
All right. And that, and that is what is what I'll call the hammer and nail construction that's ongoing at this time. Not all of it, but substantially, that's what is not done from next January.
I will say again, the Egress between the east wing and the tenant space is under that same construction.
Okay. All right. And so, but, and when you say it's under construction, what, what are you saying? What part of, you're talking about hallway?
Uh, primarily.
Sorry, what's that last one? I said, are you talking about the hallway?
Uh, primarily, what I'm talking about is the stairwell, which serves all three floors in between the tenant space and the wing, as shown on the building.
And you're talking, are you talking about the stairway in the lobby, or?
Negative. The lobby area, as shown on the overview, uh, is opposite of the, excuse me, uh, the stairwell, I am speaking of the opposite of the east wing, as shown on the background from the work line. So we're talking about the small box in between the east wing and what's, do they go to the tenant space on the back?
Okay. So let's, let's do this. If you withdraw in line. If you withdraw in line, where it says lobby, you're a north-south line there that separates lobby, east wing and the east wing. If that was locked off from occupancy by tenants, then everything, the lobby, the south wing, the west wing, that's all going to be, there's no construction going on in the lobby, the south wing, and west wing, is that true? And again, when I'm talking about construction, I'm talking about nails targeted, walls, that type of thing.
I believe so.
Okay, and so if guests were prohibited from staying in any guest rooms in the east wing, then from the fire safety standpoint, they're going to have, they're gonna be okay if the alarm and sprinklers are filled out on Thursday?
No, of course, and, uh, they, but.
We're gonna repeat that. I'll listen to what he says, and I'll read what he said.
You don't have to listen to what I said. We're not checking. Okay, so. Well, I guess what I'm trying to ask is, as of next Thursday, if the sprinkler system and alarm system are up to code, what problem would there be with tenants pocketing by the west wing and the south wing?
So, moving back to a previous statement. These planes have the highest level of alarm system in the suite on Thursday, and I want to give those two. Uh, as I stated before, any fire that occurs in the tenant space is not prevented from progressing through, uh, one of the problems that I see with that is, in the east wing, a portion of that is going to be under construction, and most likely, they will leave smoke detectors covered and sprinklers covered. So that goes with the problem for me.
Well, you're just speculating about that. I mean, this, this sprinkler system is going to be in the east wing, and the lot system in the east wing next Thursday. That's what he told us at the time.
If completed, yes, there will be a sprinkler system and alarm system.
And you've been invited with the copy, uh, Brittany Hindren again, she is the, she is the station inspector for the state license, correct?
Yes.
You have communicated with her, correct?
Uh-huh.
There is an issue that I saw in the paperwork about an attic, kind of a wall or something for an attic, what is that?
Which, are you, are you talking about today's report or the report from the third?
Well, it's, well, let me do this while, while you bring it up. Okay, we, we had a meeting on October thirteenth, correct?
Yes.
Did you prepare any reports of that meeting on October thirteenth like you did regarding inspection of October second?
I don't think.
So you didn't sit down to miss bay or inform anybody else? Did you report the same to them?
Um.
Did you do any kind of a report for anybody as a result of today's meeting?
No.
All right, and there is a, I have to find it, it's a, it's here, but there was a. Um, which corresponds, which has, is with. Get it, eight. Skip this, about two per set. Okay, um. There is an email that you sent to Miss Hindren on Monday, this was October nineteenth. And you talked to Brittany, thanks for reaching out on the subject of the construction of the stairwell. Uh, I can attach a few sections of code to clarify. The sections would, et cetera. So, one of the questions that reference that is, when was the first time that that was ever raised as something that needed to be fixed?
You mean with the wall and stairwell in the east end?
Yes, sir.
You have an attendant report from after the fire, she.
Uh, so. But the layout's not, it's a letter, it's not an inspection report?
No, there was, uh, there's an actual inspection report that she completed directly following the event on the twenty-fourth of January. The report was a bit on the twenty-fourth, but it was.
I was in Florida, so.
So, yeah, there was a, uh, if I remember correctly, there was a report done by Miss Hindren, uh, a few days after the fire event, uh, which included multiple things, but, uh, that wall was important in that report, the bottom ran, correct?
She, she did a report today, I don't know if I'm going to, ten minutes is a good age. It's a report today, I'm sorry, but I asked you, have you seen the report today?
Very good.
Okay, so you haven't seen that. Okay, and her inspection report, uh, it says maintenance need a wall place between attic and dead space per fire department.
Do you have that before me?
I didn't, I didn't cancel it, it just came in a little bit, so. You're wrong, seven pages.
This guy, the I O E three?
Correct. It says need a wall place between attic and dead space per fire department. Is that per you?
That is it.
Okay. Uh, so is this the first time that you have notified someone about this?
Yes, it is, it is under the guidance.
So when was today the first time you communicated that to them?
That is correct.
Obviously, that's not something they could take early and fix today. Takes some time to do that, so. Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Right, and her, the report is self-explanatory. Are, are you aware of the fact that the state of Missouri is prohibited from revoking or suspending hotel license by word, or no?
I'll check to that question. That is a question loaded with a legal meaning. And, and which, which I, I don't agree with, one. Number, number two, there is no way this will help you, no, it's two, as, as a person, as a business, it's all to answer that question, required to.
Well, I'm gonna ask you this. Were you aware that Miss Hindren sent me a letter on September fifteenth of this year, which is exhibit B? Advising that, and this is from the third partner, Health and Senior Services. The hero is not in position at this time under both terminated suites, lot and licenses that were previously expired on September thirty, twenty twenty. Thursday, Governor Mike Carson issued an extension to all lotting licenses will not expire until December thirty-one, twenty twenty due to COVID nineteen and the difficulties that is placed on local public health inconsequences. I will tell you that I share this, and being a constructor, when you are privy to this law.
I don't know if I can break that, why are you directing this?
I, I will offer reserve payment. And while we're at it, I'm gonna offer reserve pay, which are the second warrants from the governor of the state of Missouri, which are paid to the letter that I mentioned, this is a pay for common income as well. Would, would you agree that Marty and his folks have worked diligently to get the sprinkler system and alarm system installed?
I don't have an answer to that.
Well, you've had a lot of contact with them, uh, have you had telephone calls with them?
I have.
Emails?
I have.
Um, you've asked them questions?
I have.
They've asked you questions? They, uh, they've been working out there quite a lot?
I don't know if they're named there.
I understand that. Is there been a time even after they weren't there?
Yes.
Or how many times?
Uh, one, two.
Okay, and is, is it true that Marty lost some of his help because of COVID?
That is, they didn't get.
Lost two or three weeks of work time because of COVID?
I don't know, I'm just objecting, it's serious.
Did you talk to some, did some of the workers tell you that they had COVID this time?
No, we're all negative, I mean, do you say on that?
This is, um, retrofitted. This hotel with the sprinkler system and alarm system is a substantial project, is now in the renovation. Maybe renovation sometime. May, I agree with, uh.
Captain Charles, I have a lot of questions. Tell us what your, your title is, it's a captain, correct, and you're in charge, uh, um, you said training in what else, preventing? Training prevention, okay. And in connection with that, would you be kind of like the city of today, like fire code person in the fire department? What are your responsibilities? Yes, can you just tell us a little bit about what you do in that regard?
Uh, so we span anything, understanding and interpreting code that would apply to both new and existing occupancies, understanding and reviewing plans for new occupancies, supervising a fellow inspector.
Who's that?
Uh, Jamie Bull, the best fire.
Yeah, he's responsible for. Sure, yeah. This is someone from the city of today, you're applying that.
Better than I do.
And in that role, had you had an opportunity to work with the owners of the econom lot? Did it property a number of times?
Yes.
You inspected the property a number of times?
Yes.
Jamie Bull has inspected the property a number of times, correct?
Yes.
You reviewed and supervised this part, et cetera, right?
Yes.
Uh, and have you communicated with the owners of the econom lot?
Maybe.
And who primarily did you communicate?
Uh, about, uh, Min, and it's something pretty, girl.
Okay, um, and you communicated with her verbally?
Yes.
On many occasions?
Yes.
Uh, and then you only communicated with her in writing, et cetera, right? Correctly, you mean? Um, she asked you questions, and you tried to give answers.
Yes.
Uh, do you, and, and have you specifically worked with the owners of the econom lot as it relates to fire code compliance?
Yes.
Has that been an issue?
Yes.
All right, and dating back even before the fire on January twenty-four, twenty twenty?
Yes.
Uh, and do you feel like Captain Charles, in your role, uh, with the city of fire department, that you've done everything that you can do to try to help Miss Baca? And, and for help to, uh, soon to go on the econom lot, to ensure that the company is compliant with the fire code?
Yes.
Um, I want to run through a few exhibits here real quick, just to give us some record. If you'll turn to exhibit five in the notebook, um, can you tell us what this is?
The, the, the report from the fire meeting, uh, one twenty-four, twenty.
Okay, so, just so the record's clear, this business, the econom lot, actually had a fire on January twenty-four, twenty twenty. Is that right? Correct, did you respond to that fire?
I did.
Okay, um, and in connection with, and did you help with fire out?
I was the first person.
Okay, and in connection with your work there that day, um, did you observe anything that would indicate a fire protection?
Yes.
Were there multiple violations?
Yes.
Can you give us a few, just to give us a flavor of what you saw when you were there?
Among other things, uh, two that come to mind, I would speak about is twenty pound open cylinders found within the residence and, uh, a storage room, one of which that our fire suppression crews sprawled within made further to the boat while attempting fire. Uh, the other one was the, uh, the fact that I was the one who activated the, uh, alarm system.
What do you mean?
So the alarm system that was existing at the time was a manual on our own way to activate the closing of fire doors and activate the occupant notification system. Somebody had pulled the main call station, or one of the many multiple call stations. Uh, and that had not been done upon my arrival, so.
Uh, and had guests at the hotel been notified that there was? Uh, let me reverse that. Had the guests at the hotel, when you arrived, been notified that the hotel was on fire?
No, not at all.
All right, and you involved in an effort to try to notify the guests.
I was.
Uh, and then, uh, after the fire occurred, I think you mentioned earlier, but an inspector from the state of Missouri came out and reviewed the scene, is that right?
Yes.
As ever, he had been. Okay, and as a result of that fire, did the state of Missouri, uh, require the econom lots to do anything? Yes, it pertains to complying with fire codes.
Yes, they, uh, they determined that due to the extent of the damage that they were occupying, yeah, they made a renovation. And that meant that they needed to comply with up-to-date regulations.
Okay, and as, and as it, and, and, uh, did, uh, if you'll turn to exhibit six in the, in the book, and, and all, uh, all of it, exhibit five in evidence, you see exhibit six there? What is the? What is the?
It was a letter to econom lodge dated March 17, 2020, from the city.
Okay. And in this letter, does Ms. Hindren notify Ms. Baka about what needed to be done after the fire so that the econom lodge will be compliant with the fire code?
Yes, this is New Locking Sanders. And talks about, among other things, mutilation of supervisor systems and fire alarm systems that involve smoke and incandescent devices.
Okay. And that was required because as a result of the fire, in order to renovate the building, it would require what the code identified as a quote major renovation, quote, is that right?
Yes, that she comes to the state.
Okay. And so basically what that means is the econom lodge was no longer going to be grandfathered into an older code that didn't require a supervised sprinkler system, is that right?
Yes.
Correct. Okay. And this letter, the letter is dated March 17, 2020. Did you have any conversations with Ms. Baka even before this day about what was going to be acquired going forward as it related to fire code compliance?
Yes.
And do you recall, were those conversations verbal or in writing?
Verbal.
All right. Do you have any recollection, even if it's general, about what you would have discussed with Ms. Baka about that issue before March 17, 2020?
If I remember correctly, when we were out doing one of our inspections, I had made the comment, something along the lines of regoing in the current state was most likely not going to meet compliance under the new regulations of Soudalia 34. And then I didn't feel like I finished that conversation thoroughly, so I followed that up with the emails of her stating similar.
Okay. And if we look at exhibit eight, this is a compilation of several different emails that you would add with both Brittany Hindren and Ms. Baka, correct?
Yes.
And you've got an opportunity to look at these.
Yes.
And you either received these emails or you walked with them.
Correct.
And they all relate to the econom lodge that's such a.
Yes.
And they also all relate to this issue of making sure that the econom lodge became code compliant with fire rules, right?
Yes.
And so if we look at the one, and they're in chronological order by date, if we look at the March 10, 2020 email chain between you and Ms. Baka, are you there? Would this be an example of some of the information that you were providing to Ms. Baka to make sure that she fully understood what was necessary so that they could become code compliant?
Yes, the main intent behind this was to inform her, but more importantly to what they, what they dialogue between her and the state.
Okay. And so what you wanted, what you also wanted is to make sure that the state communicated exactly to Ms. Baka what they wanted, is that right?
Yes.
And so then if we look at the exhibit on March six, or exhibit six, the March 17, 2020 letter, that follows your email communication to Ms. Baka. And here we have Ms. Hindren telling Ms. Baka exactly what is needed to be done, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then if you'll turn to exhibit seven, this is a letter from the city of Soudalia, and specifically Mayor Cadiz, to Ms. Baka, correct?
Yes.
And you're familiar with this letter already, not? We are. And in this letter, the city is reiterating to Ms. Baka, the owner of the econom lodge, what is going to be needed in order to make sure that the business is compliant with fire codes, is that right?
Yes.
All right. And you also, in this letter, the city also noted code violations. And when I'm talking to you about code, I'm talking about the fire code, okay? Code violations on January 24, 2020 and March 4, 2020, is that right?
Yes.
And then on the second page, you can also see some of the station of the, some of the problems that the econom lodge had in connection with fire inspections, code compliance in 2018, is that right?
Yes.
Now, what I want to talk to you a little bit about here is the schedule that's set forth in the April 7, 2020 letter. To go to the bottom of page two, the city enclosed a corrective action plan for the econom lodge, correct?
Yes.
The city did not immediately suspend the business license of the econom lodge, right?
Correct.
City didn't revoke the business license of the econom lodge, correct?
Correct.
The city gave the econom lodge time and a schedule by which it could come into compliance and still operate, true?
Yes.
And it's my understanding, you can see the first paragraph of the corrective action plan, they were provided stamped plans with respect to the work that was going to be done by May 15, 2020, correct?
Correct.
Did that happen?
No.
Do you have a recollection with respect to when they actually ended up providing the stamped plans?
Specifically.
Do you have a general timeframe?
I believe July.
Whether you versus? Yeah. And so it's my understanding that the city granted the econom lodge multiple extensions of time to provide the stamped plans, is that right? Is that your understanding?
Yes.
Okay. And then if we look, there's other deadlines that discuss, you know, back and forth in terms of making sure that the plans are approved. But if you look at paragraph five on page three, it provides a deadline with respect to when the work is to be substantially completed, correct?
Yes.
And what date did the city provide for that?
October 1, 2020.
All right. And these deadlines that are set forth in the corrective action plan, they apply not only to ensuring that there is a supervised sprinkler system, but also that they do the construction work to the fire damage part of the building, correct?
Yes, correct.
And that piece of it, the construction work associated with the fire damage part of the building, that would be more in Devon Lake's territory than yours, correct?
I would say primarily both, sir.
Okay. And the fire piece would be. And primarily, even though there's been multiple code violations throughout the years, at this point in time, we're talking about, we're focused on, correct me if I'm wrong, ensuring that this building has a supervised sprinkler system. So I'm very interested, yes, okay. Now, when was the last time you were out at the property?
Today.
Okay. And you were out there on October 13 as well?
Yes.
And you went out there on October 2, 2020, correct?
Yes.
And what was the purpose of that?
October 7?
Yes.
The purpose of October 2 was to determine exactly where they stood as far as meeting their line of October 1 with substantial completion.
Okay. And what did you conclude in connection with your inspection on October 2?
That they're fine now.
Did you conclude that the work that was supposed to be done that's set forth in the April 7, 2020 letter and as required in the code had not reached substantial completion, is that what?
I'm going to go with that. But the term substantial is not defined anywhere. It's not defined in the mayor's letter. It's not defined anywhere. So that is pure speculation and one person's opinion. That's one of the issues that we have as a mayor's lawyer to make. Talks about substantial completion. That's not a defined term anywhere. And so you're asking him about his opinion. And I don't think it's relevant.
We are being questioned here. Did you reach, let me just ask it this way. But on October 2, 2020, when you went out there and did your inspection and we had the report that you did, it's 12, correct? Was the work that was supposed to be done by October 1 and not focused on the supervised sprinkler system, was it complete?
No.
Was it even close?
No.
All right. And then when you went out on October 13, was it complete?
No.
And then when you went out on October 21st, today, this afternoon, was the work complete?
No.
All right. And in terms of, I mean, they don't even have water running to the sprinklers at this point, correct?
Correct.
All right. And so do you have an opinion, as you sit here today, as to whether or not substantial completion has been reached as it pertains to the installation of the supervised sprinklers?
Substantial?
No.
Do you have an opinion?
As to whether. Same as the, my opinion today at the time.
Now, I'm trying to understand that at one point in time, Marty Graham told you that he did that work down four or six weeks, correct?
Right.
And now the second audit?
Correct.
All right. And now on October 21st, if you say it's been a week, is that right? The April 11th? Okay. Believe that when you see it.
Correct.
So. And so I want to go to exhibit. Well, let's start with exhibit 13. This is Brittany Hindren's report on October 13, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a copy of that? I did just think. October 13, yeah, what you did today. I'm looking at the October 13 one now. Oh, no, no. 13 is October. Just the October. No, that's the October 13 inspection. Do you have a copy of that? Okay. And before I ask you questions about this, let me just get right to the point. As of this afternoon, is the econom lodge in compliance with the fire code?
No.
So as of right now, as we speak, they're in violation of the law, correct? What is the total further distribution? Yes. And so if we, if we look at exhibit 13, there is a chart with several categories and there are columns that allow Ms. Hindren to identify whether or not the econom lodge is in compliance or not in compliance, correct?
Correct.
And as you said, on October 13, there are several entries indicating that the econom lodge was not in compliance, correct?
Correct.
Why is fire code compliance important?
It all goes back to life safety. And this is happening when it was the life of those or anybody who lives within that.
And on exhibit 13, we actually see a section D, which is labeled life safety, correct?
Yes.
And were they out of compliance or not in compliance with respect to any of those life safety factors on October 13, 2020?
It shows items one and item seven.
One of those.
Item one is combustible toxic items, usage and storage are compliant. And item seven, electrical panel protected labels and repair are compliant.
And did you actually observe those things yourself while you were out there?
I remember the combustible toxic items. I do not recall the issue of the electrical panel.
And what was the combustible toxic items?
Where I recall, the issue was that they had different items that were unlabelled. Let me see the test size. Okay, so D1 on the last thing in this report, probably about 335, five, nine, six, seven, eight, four.
And that name, Matt Ferguson?
Correct.
That a life safety issue?
Yes.
Okay. Let's look at exhibit 14. And this may have already been marked with a letter by Mr. Spanner, big mark twice. Exhibit 14 is Ms. Hindren's report from today, correct?
Yes.
And we have this same chart indicating certain things are in compliance, certain things are not in compliance. And then there's also a PNO column for not observed, correct?
Yes.
And if we go down to the required annual third party inspections, is the econom lodge noted as being out of compliance with anything?
It noted as out of compliance with item one, barrels, and item two, sprinkler system. Item three, local fire, building, special ordinances. And item five, backflow device test.
And that test, as Marty Graham indicated, that that test is going to happen next Thursday? You look for like, you're thinking the backflow device test? Is that a different type?
The backflow test should be associated with the domestic walls, right?
Okay.
If I were to read it all.
Okay. And in paragraphs one, two, and three, fire alarm system, sprinkler system, local fire and building code, special ordinances, isn't that what we've been talking about since March of 2020? Supervised sprinkler system?
Yes.
And even the state is noting that they're out of compliance, correct?
Yes.
So. It's your understanding that the reason why the license was suspended was because of the issues, the life safety issues?
Yes.
Now, I want to just make sure we get some of these records in the, in the, at a particular turn to exhibit nine. Can you tell us what exhibit nine is?
Exhibit nine, you're seeing the inspection that we have performed on the econom lodge.
And it dates back to July 11, 2018?
Yes, the inspection on the first one, 11/21.
Okay. And so there's been multiple inspections. If we look at July 11, 2018, did they have any code violations in connection with that inspection?
No. This would wrap it up objectively, right? Because I mean, the law consists of documents back in 2018, which is already going to establish that the record was still action taken regardless of life security, because of the inspection. It's done in 2018, 2019, at that time, with the fire change.
And this, the circuit court, they didn't take it that far. And some context with respect to why I'm offering. These documents provide context with respect to why the city has committed the action or has taken the action that is taken. The, there's a history of code violations, fire code violations with respect to this particular property. And it was necessary for the city of Soudalia to set up a schedule by and it was necessary for the city of Sedna to set up a schedule by which this property would become compliant. Because, um, as I said, there's a history of violations. And exhibit 10 demonstrates many of the violations that are noted historically, they get finished temporarily, but then they show back up later. Um, and so it, it, it demonstrates reasonable reasons in part of the city. But with respect to the July 11, 2018, um, uh, inspections, were there several instances of, uh, failure of the fire code?
Yes.
All right. And then it looks like the next, uh, one we had, there were a couple, uh, um, inspections, I think four inspections, actually, in late summer 2019, correct? It looked to me like that had to do with an Egress issue during the construction taking place.
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And then, uh, we had the fire in January 24, 2020, and then another annual inspection was done on March 4, 2020, correct?
Yes.
And, uh, there were several, uh, failures in, in terms of, uh, compliance with the code in that inspection, correct?
Yes.
And just in your own words, Captain Shaw, did you ever have a situation where you had noted a violation by the economo, and then months or even a year later, you would do another inspection and that same violation existed?
Yes.
Um, can you give us a flavor of what you're talking about there?
Why the Egress, uh, among other things, from someone? Uh, prior to the issue of seeing, uh, certain things involved, uh, items such as storage, and having that in not only in order of fashion so that we can better deal with the same fires, but also in respect to storage not being allowed to be near in the field.
Uh, and was there also a recovery issue with fire doors?
So if I remember correctly, uh, we had issues with the fire doors not being closed because they were blocked open. Uh, that primarily had to do with, in the beginning, the alarm system was not being contained towards service. And they had to block the doors open, you know, to be able to open the magnets when it worked, at the alarm. This was, uh, active.
Are all of these things that you've identified life safety issues?
Yes.
And who, who are these codes intended to protect?
Anyone, I believe, uh, to include the alarms, the, the occupants, the ball, the tenant code, their staff, defenders, uh, and then the hours that we respond to it in.
Do you have, based on all the work that you've done, uh, as captain of the city of today, department, and all of the interactions that you've had with the owners of the economo, do you have concerns based on that and professional experience about their ability to consistently comply with the fire code? Do you have any concerns? Tell us a little bit about that. Why? Why do you have concerns?
I believe it all goes back to the history and the, the idea that we find a violation, we do work with them to achieve compliance, but that same violation shows back up in our next annual inspection or as a complaint. So we just have a history of same violations repeating, uh, throughout the, this year.
Okay. And, um, Mr., uh, Mr. Spanner, talk to you a little bit about the governor's executive board. Have you received any information from anyone indicating that as the, as a captain in the city of Chicago Department, if someone is charged with fire code compliance, that you're not allowed to enforce fire codes because of that issue board? Would that make any sense to you at all?
No.
Um, do you have exhibit 15 in front of you?
Yes.
Exhibit 15, Mr. Spanner, I think I gave you a copy of it, it's in here. I just want to make sure that we have in the record what the actual code violations are, so that there's no confusion about that. So if you would, take us through what exhibit 15 is. I think it's multiple options. What is? It looks like the first thing is the governing lodging establishments. Tell us, tell us what these are and why they have something to do with this matter.
The first book of this is the governing lodging establishment, Department Health and Senior Services, State Lighting Code Establishment. And, uh, this is where we have found a definition for major renovation, which is under item 1, general, uh, definition A, item 23. The, uh, item 2 here is talking about the requirements for painting, lodging license for existing, new, and renovated. Item 3, uh, is the requirement of operating a lodging license, and talks about the safety forcing of this. And, um, point 5 is talking about fuel-fired, uh, equipment and the need to, or probably not, second. E is talking about fire safety. Uh, and one of section A is stating also that it shall involve all building materials working to. The issue of regular means Egress issues, uh, discovered in E, the door, and the meeting, Egress shall be locked against Egress when the building is occupied. We, O is talking about smoke detectors, uh, and this goes, goes into the alarm side of this. And, uh, even with their lodging code, they're referencing an FPA 72. This is where.
That's in O, run number 2. On page 4.
Yes. Under 3D, uh, this is where we're talking about the new lodging establishments, which was kicked in for the major renovation. B is talking about fire alarm systems shall be installed and maintained in accordance with the FPA 92. And National Fire Protection Association, which is listed 2. When fire alarm systems require all smoke detectors and heat detectors are interconnected, that will be located, big emergency, that's where we, uh, that portion of it.
Is that part of the supervised sprinkler system that we're talking about? The interconnected alarms?
So, uh, when I would speak about interconnected, I would say that, that references all smoke detectors being connected together and then connected to the alarm.
Okay.
So that any one detector goes off, it's not going to happen.
Okay.
And then B is where we're getting into the supervised sprinkler system. Things that all buildings shall be protected throughout are approved supervised automatic sprinklers in accordance with National Fire Protection Association.
Okay. And so with respect to the governing lodging establishments, this isn't all of them, but you put this exhibit together, is that right? Yes. All right. But these, these are all of the provisions of that section of the survey file that, that the, the economo currently is not in compliance with, correct?
I don't think it's all of them.
No, okay.
But as far as these, and these automatic sprinkler system, uh, the alarm system, and, and those that, yes, they don't influence that.
Okay. Well, let's just make sure the record, we know exactly which ones are mine and mine's. So are you saying 3C and 3D on pages 4 and 5?
Yes, 3C and 3D would be, which you would be referencing in the report, that's out of compliance on item 1 to fire alarms in this.
The, the report from today, exhibit 15.
Yes.
Or now with the 14, so.
Yeah, the inspection, um, yeah, 10.12, anything by, uh, within.
And then, and then after that, we move on to the 2015 ISD, which is still within exhibit 15, correct?
Yes.
All right. And are there any provisions in here that they are not in compliance with? Just identify the ones that, that are not in compliance with. If they're all.
So 93.3.1.2, and that being 13, also, there's something, uh, this is where it's calling out, 13, 16, 17, 18, but they're not in compliance with that. Uh, minus 7.2 directly below that, uh, where required. Uh, this is where we're calling out, uh, NFA 72, with the, uh.
Okay, so, so the, the sedation references NFA 72 also.
Yes.
And requires compliance with that in the circumstances.
Yes.
All right. And then the next document, we have a section 1023, interior exit stairways and ramps. Um, is there anything in here that, that is a compliance problem currently?
So this leads back to the meeting that provides for the interior stairwell, leading to tenant space, leading to hotel space. And this is where, among other things, is where we're finding that, uh, that plus 40 other construction must meet a minimum weight one-hour rating, uh, of, of one-hour requirement.
And, and have you been working with Ms. Daca to try to solve that problem?
In the way that we're in this.
Okay. Because Ms. Daca wants to put wood on the wall layer, and that's not a lot of, something. The, uh, It takes a long time to measure it.
Uh, the request was made by the owners to, the Hindren, that, uh, this could be sealed off with wood rather than the, uh, high-end straw wall that's required. And so she asked for my opinion, and I provided, uh, an email to her that I stored with the city.
Uh, and then the next page, it says, uh, section 703, fire resistance rated construction. Is that the same issue? Are we talking about that area between tenant space and the E team?
Uh, I would go with one of all of that, with 703.2, fully protected, and, uh, blocking of fire doors is where that comes from. I didn't want to, uh, blocking of a fire door today. So that's, uh, that wasn't an issue today. The maintenance of fire resistant rated construction. So that, that's pointing to this as well, that, uh, that stairwell would have been a one-hour rated stairwell prior, prior to, and must be maintained.
And then the next two documents are NFA 72 and NFA 13, all right? And you've already referenced both of those because they were referenced in other codes, correct?
Yes.
And, and they are not in compliance with these standards, you're correct.
Correct.
And those have been incorporated into the, the code, the, the fire code for safety and security. True? Yes, compliance is required by law.
Yes.
Uh, let me just make sure that I got all of the exhibits in that we talked about, um, on exhibit 15. On exhibit 5, exhibit 6, exhibit 7, exhibit 8, exhibit 9. Exhibit 12, I think, has already been added, uh, in connection with Mr. Spanner's examination. Exhibit 13, exhibit 14, and exhibit 15. Those are all the questions that I have.
Yes.
Oh. Uh, exhibit 15, you discovered, you mentioned you prepared that?
Yes.
When, when did you prepare that?
Yesterday or today?
I don't know, what, yesterday or today? I think it's based on the tape. Let me, uh, ask you, so I have those, they put in the record for it. So considering you're currently, it's Mr. Ty Cetchen, the Armstrong Tuesday, and you're sitting here. Have you communicated with him before today?
Yes.
When was the first time that you communicated? I didn't know if he was involved in this case until the 2rd of December. Um, when did you first communicate with Mr. Cetchen?
Well, I'm going to object to that question because, one, that's relevant. Two, you get too really close to, um, attorney-client privilege. I don't think there's any basis upon which you can actually question this case. There would be a reason for you to have, have a conversation with him.
Well, uh, please, you're not going to, unless you can give me some sort of proof. Well, I just think you lay the record so that you are business attorney, and you're claiming an attorney-client privilege with him. If you are claiming an attorney-client privilege with him, I think that goes to the bias of the witness in this testimony. You've had communications, you've dealt with it in the past. If you're claiming that you are business attorney, then you can make that objection, but I want to do the record, and I don't want other persons to know about that. Because I, I think we all need to know that what you guys have discussed, but if he, if you're applying, they're not entitled to ask you that. But I think we can lay the record.
Well, and, and, and I'm not sure, I, I don't have, I'm not sure how it would be relevant. Um, I don't know why you'd be doing that in this role. But nevertheless, I'm happy to let you know that I represent the city of today. And Captain Shaw is employed in the city of today. Actually, with my representation of the city, and at the city's direction, um, and consistent with the UPTJON, uh, standard, I have had communications with Captain Shaw that are purpose.
All right, so you're claiming an attorney-client relationship with Captain Shaw?
I'm claiming an attorney-client relationship with the city of today. And Captain Shaw, his role as the representative of the city in connection with my engagement, uh, my communications with him are subject to that same purpose.
So you're asking me questions about your communications, you're going to instruct him not to answer based on attorney-client for absolutely purpose? And are you going to take that same position with anybody that's employed by the city of today that I don't want to testify?
Who do you want to testify?
No, I, I just said, anybody that's employed in the city of today. He does partner.
I, I.
Mr. Phil Shaw, his lady, anyone else, are you, are you claiming that to all of those people as well? Let's cross that bridge when we get there. We won't get into this. All right. So now that we have a record about that, let's do this. After the fire, we have in evidence the, these inspections that were performed, correct? But the last one that's in this, in the document that I see was June 16 issue. Is that correct?
In these days, was there any deficiency noted at the time of the inspection?
So if you're believing they had a, you can walk to me in E D S, however, they will not use any of that portion of the going at times in the.
Last, last inspection, and there haven't been any more inspections of that type since June of this year, is that correct?
How do you guys say?
Now, did you personally perform any of the inspections that are put in here before the fire?
Yes.
Is it in any time part of the fire that you ever, maybe you have a recognition that the license was suspended, based on those violations?
No.
You mentioned right after the fire, that the code, that you determined code violations immediately after the fire, correct?
Yes.
Were those corrected? I'm not talking about the retro fitting that's now required, but are there any, any of the deficiencies in the inspection after the fire that have not been corrected?
I don't know.
Now, maybe we can put up on the screen, I don't think we have mine, so here, but we were asked a lot of questions about Ms. Hindren's report, this is exhibit thirteen, put that up.
Thirteen?
Whatever, fourteen?
Uh, no, uh, no, thirteen.
Ten, ten thirteen?
Yes.
Yeah, this one?
Yeah, do, do we have, do we have the, the one for today, except that's fourteen? I know, but do we, do we have that up here on any display?
Yes.
Okay, so let's just do this guy. Do you, do you have, do you have a side by side, Captain, the two inspections by Ms. Hindren? You've got the, the one from, uh, number thirteen, and then you have the one from today, correct?
Yes.
Counsel just asked you about, he just asked you about all the deficiencies that were noted on the thirteen, but it did not go back and cover with you the things that were noted today, so I would like to cover those with you, we apparently don't have it on the screen.
Yeah.
But on, on, on the thirteen, now, because we just got it, uh, I'm not bawling anybody, it's the same. On the thirteen, Ms. Hindren notes, um, there's a section about sanitation and housekeeping, there were things that were out of compliance, which you looked at today, the only thing was wall force and ceiling to be repaired, which is understandable because under the question. Correct?
I'm sorry, I was, I thought a day differently, I'm trying to.
You know my question.
So we're speaking in the section C, sanitation and housekeeping?
Yes.
And the question is whether items noted that had out of compliance on thirteen, are now in compliance on ten first?
Yes. So, let's do it this way, on the thirteen, under that section, one, two, three, four, five things out of compliance, today's inspection, all of those have been corrected except for one thing, which is wall force and ceiling to be repaired, which is the case because the construction is unknown.
True. She had noted that it was not observed on the ten twenty-one report, so if that intended to say that they've been corrected, then yes, all right, she didn't mark the deficiencies, right? In section C, I have one name.
Then on the thirteen, she did not, when she did the inspection on thirteen, she did not inspect fire alarm systems from persistent threat, is what she did.
She has marked it there, um, I have one, two, three, uh, four, third, fourth, eight inspections on the two, uh, ten thirteen.
On the base inspection, second page, here's what her problems are, uh, there was a wall with mold torn down today, a fire, verified new walls, but there's specifications in it, correct?
Yes.
Have you established those specifications yet?
Uh, that is, uh, covered within the, you know, we spoke about, uh, since the first meeting and forward to near coming.
This, this week, on Monday. This is one, you said on Monday, nineteen.
Yeah, Monday, I told her, maybe.
Now, the, uh, there was a set of, of building plans that George Hester, the architect, had prepared in this ability to say, correct?
Yes.
Were you called upon to review those plans?
Yes.
Did you approve those plans?
In the end, yes.
Some corrections have to be made?
Yes, and we ultimately, uh, never got them to the point where we were really likely to see them, but we agreed that they were to a point where we could work with the construction groups to work out the last set of those.
Okay, and did you also have to review and approve the plans from Sprinkler Fire Systems?
Yes.
Did you approve that?
Uh, the way that they were originally presented to us.
Have you approved any changes to the plan? Is it worth?
They have the changes.
But, but you, you have notified the changes by Martin, and you have given him the go ahead to make those changes.
True.
Now, yeah, kind of what changes have you told him to change?
So we determined that, uh, there were going to be storage area added in the attic space of the owner's residence, we have committed, uh, additional plans for review for that after we determined that that was happening, and no plans were submitted with those changes. The wall that we're talking about earlier, that additional change was made originally, that attic space is going to be filled off and no longer be used for storage, therefore an occupied space no longer be the sprinkler system. However, the owners apparently have decided they want to continue to have a storage space, therefore that is a change in the sprinkler plan and alarm plan, and that has not been submitted to be by the works agent.
And did you, did you review the work with Hester, then?
Uh, partially, I'm sorry, partially, I guess.
Did you ask Martin to make any changes to the work with Hester?
I addressed, uh, both the owner and Mr. Green, with the way that the attic space is currently configured, it will not be in compliance. The occupied space or accessible space in the attic have to have a full sprinkler system, there is only three pens that I can find in the attic space, so the space that they intend to use as storage will be protected, but the space they have open, not protected. So I gave them, uh, the option of, you can add additional sprinklers throughout the entire attic space, so that it is protected because it is, uh, occupied space, or you can build a wall that separates those, and that can store space, and the other portion becomes an occupied space, which is no longer the sprinklers.
And that says something you're gonna check on next Thursday? That'd be probably intentional, to see whether they done one or the other?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, you pick up wall, whether they had sprinklers, and that's something you're gonna check on next Thursday.
Yes.
That's all I will think.
Mr. Spangler pointed out that in June of twenty twenty, you went out there for an inspection, and you didn't note any fire code violations, do you recall that? I do, I just wanna make sure that, that doesn't confuse the issues, and I'll ask you this question again, are they in compliance with the fire code right now?
No.
Okay, um, and that relates to the, the sprinkler and fire law along the system, correct?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Spangler went through the exhibit thirteen and fourteen, and he, he had to kind of compare what Brittany Hindren found on October thirteen versus what she found on October twenty-first, do you recall that?
Yes.
And I think the point of the questioning was to demonstrate that adds up October twenty-one, many of the things that they were found to be out of compliance with, with respect to fire code, has been corrected on October twenty-one. Uh, do you recall that line of questions?
I recall my question.
Is that consistent, does that look familiar to you, in terms of your interactions with the ecology of the, the course of the last few years?
In my experience, you note violations, they correct violations, but they become violations again after.
Okay, uh, and when you're looking at a document like this, and I think this is exhibit thirteen, there's a, a key at the top, and it says, at, at the top of the, uh, the columns and rows, the table section, in equals in compliance, correct? Yes, out equals not in compliance, playing on additional pages, right?
Yes.
In O equals not observed, right?
True.
And, and, uh, do you, based upon your experience doing these types of inspections yourself, what does that typically mean in your profession? Which you didn't even look at?
I can't, uh, explain exactly their process, but, uh, if you really look at our inspections, and we know it's not observed, it's something that we did not look at on that inspection. And typically that goes into, on any inspection you're looking at, you've got facilities, but on a follow-up inspections, you're only looking at previous violations, that's all.
I don't have any more questions.
Can we take a break?
Sure.
Hold on, if you want.
Well, I don't know if you want, I mean, that much question, I know.
Are we under recess?
We, we agree to recess.
I can do.
I'm sorry.
They put what they were saying. I use my handbag.
So, yeah, one point they asked, did, did he got more or not?
Over the rest?
No, we can do it either how we guys want to do it, she can decide to take whatever she has to do. An addict, and sometimes people just wanna keep their own decision.
So what do you think?
I didn't, I, well, you know, I can tell you what I got. I've got A B, F T, and A dot. I, okay, I've got A for print, I had A B, F T, A dot. I was a black and white fellow of the aerial, of the cap.
Okay.
I'm not sure what G is.
G is the, uh, the city.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. I wrote it down as a date, not as a, I wrote it down as February first, I didn't know what that was.
Did anybody need more water? Go get some?
Yeah.
You good? You have water here, anybody?
No.
Anybody else?
Emily, you care for water?
So is everybody present?
Thank you.
Oh, just, now, yes. I left it.
Bring it up, Robert.
Sure.
Wait, that's why we missed Megan Page. Could have hurt us.
I don't know, Katie gets pretty good sessions going on today, I don't know why you didn't bring any.
Because? I didn't wanna be an undue influence.
I didn't wanna be an undue influence. Do you ever need supplies at the toll cost of the?
No, I was, I was thinking around about that, would be when we would.
It would be easier to me, start to filing numbers, you know, doing things like that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yeah. Once I started adding up and then figured out.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be, I only think it's the right thing to do.
It's gonna be gorgeous.
Well, the, uh, the engineers, when they did that study, they said, they could have been about a hundred, a hundred fifty.
Yes.
Yeah. To give it up, you know, to get it. But then, up to the place.
And I think, they're gonna be pretty.
I think they will.
They're gonna be pretty, like, you know, they never complain.
No.
I'm surprised they didn't.
You know, I really, I go over there on holidays, just to greet them on Thanksgiving and Christmas. That's very special, too. I never took a tour.
Yeah, yeah. They're, they're doing, well, the one drawer, and then the one cabinet, and then I'm like, hold it up. When they told me, I'm like, hold on, that's a good one.
Yeah. Hopefully, they can get the neighborhood to wrestle with it.
I'm still in first.
You should, you should be.
I should, yeah, I should.
One little change is, it's a beautiful Christmas gift, if what it's gonna be, does that sound?
It'll probably be Christmas for us.
Yeah.
You shall proceed.
Thank you. Uh, I'll talk to counsel about this, the record on law of exhibit D, which is American Order seven, of twenty twenty, establishing a record. Maybe we can tell your name, please?
Bethany.
And what is your employment?
Officially, it's a.
I just had openly a few questions, uh, for you, and I might go on a direction with this. Particularly in terms of when you discussed this matter within it. The council bias for questions that through communications, you know, on the law. That's true. You find it in terms of privileges or, yes? Particularly with my explanation and your questioning, uh, Mr. Shaw. Is it correct that George Esser is an architect here in city?
Correct.
Did he submit plans from your review for the work on the hotel?
Yes.
Were those plans approved?
I think they should be, yes.
You had to have, he would submit something, and then you would have, you recommended or required changes?
Yes.
And you said it required six changes?
Yes.
Before there's some, back and forth about what is required by the building, what's not required by the general changes or?
The Michael detail.
Right. So, would you be the person that would be responsible for issuing the building permit?
Correct.
If you issue a building permit, or permit, I should say.
Yes.
Do you get, uh, the city building permits? Is it permits or permits?
In this case, it was two permits.
Okay. And why are you, were there two permits?
It's building permit and marketable permit.
Okay. And so, if you get those permits, uh, is the property owner asked to tell you the expected cost of making repairs in order to get the permits?
Yes.
And was that information provided to you before the permits were issued?
Yes.
And can you tell us how much was estimated for the cost of doing all the work to bring itself up to compliance?
And you already call, we have to work with the permit.
You know, those are in your, those are in your standard, like, definitely. So, considered forms.
The electrical power is two hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
I'm sorry, maybe my question, maybe I ask you a bad question. This, this is like, the property owner had to submit to you the anticipated cost of doing the work to get permits?
Yes.
Okay. And so, for the electrical work, what was the estimate, how much that was cost?
Uh, works for a regular rate, that was the network fixtures, respectable, which is, so that like, nothing, huh? Minutes per minute.
Okay. And how about the, the building permit cost?
Uh... Renovation, what, a two hundred thousand, with fire areas.
Okay. And how about what's doing sprinkler system and fire alarm system?
Uh, that's three hundred and a hundred and fifty-one thousand.
Now, uh, on October thirteen, you were out there at the hotel, I would say, or the tenant was there, Mr. Captain Shaw. Mr. Shaw, Captain Shaw, there.
Yes.
And, uh, we met with Marty, the sprinkler manager.
Yes.
And then we did all that again today, correct?
Yes.
Uh, and did you have any questions for Marty, from your standpoint as a building official, about the work that had been done, or that needed to be done?
Uh, I don't handle the fire inspection.
So, all that, that's up to Captain Shaw.
Yes.
That's all I have, Emily. Thank you very much.
Just like, just a couple of questions. In your role as the building code official, you had an opportunity to work with and interact with, um, the ECO watch, ECO watch, at least the article for the ECO watch, correct?
Yes.
All right. Um, and you're, just described your role as it pertains to just submission of plans, the eventual approval of plans, and then making sure that the actual work complies with the plan. It was sort of a big role in that.
So, the architect was given plans to me, and then this person to, Captain Shaw, to work. Sometimes, sometimes help, but do they are things to be involved or not? I compile all those comments, and send them back to the buyer, and they may be issued adjustments. They're reflected in the comments, and one of all the comments has been ratified. Then we issue a building permit, and we can start the inspection after that. It works one way.
Okay. For this project, would it be fair to say that your focus was more on the construction, the renovation of the fire catch part of the building? And Captain Shaw's focus would have been fire safety issues, life safety issues relative to fire code?
Yes.
Certainly, exhibit ten, I'm looking to you. Can you tell us what exhibit ten is?
These are various emails that I sent to Esther regarding the comments that the plan used.
Okay. And then, these emails, were they also incorporating comments from Captain Shaw on uh, things that would be more in his area?
Yes, and the, 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 Captain Shaw.
Okay. Um, and you, I think you just testified that you, did you go out with Captain Shaw on October second, the day after the deadline should have all this working?
Yes.
Was it your understanding that the city was asking, requiring, I suppose, um, the, the box to, to not only make sure that they became fire, uh, compliant with fire codes by October one, but also the renovations to the fire damage area?
Yes.
And when you went out there on October second, had that work been completed?
No.
Is it even close to completion?
No.
Is it even close, you were out there today, too, but is it even close to completion now?
No.
Is there any way in the world that you could be, work that has been done out there to be substantially complete for the part of your focus on? And, uh, in terms of the various, the six different submissions of plans they can receive from George Esser on behalf of the owners of the ECO watch, do you feel like you were adequately responsive in terms of getting back to them and letting them know what the problems were with the plans?
Yes.
And did I hear you correctly that the issue was, there just wasn't enough detail being provided in terms of what was going to be completed?
Yes.
And does exhibit ten reflect the detail that the city actually has to provide to them, so that they can get these things into the plan, so that they can get approved?
Yes.
That's all I have.
Uh, I've got a couple of questions. So, I, I think we maybe covered this, but the, the construction work was ongoing, ongoing. It's really hold in about the fire area, which was where the owners resided, correct?
Yes, except for the general area that we, we used to have.
Right. Other than that. So, the, the work that hasn't been completed yet, as far as your role in this matter, it's not room for occupancy by guests, it's where the tenants, where the owners would live, correct?
Well, yeah.
Now, uh, and so, we're talking about that one of the areas of the hotel. You have done inspections of your own as to construction on that area has been ongoing?
No.
And I, I haven't seen any written reports from you. Have you generated any written reports?
No.
Okay. Have you seen any of the work that has been completed so far, that is not up to your requirements?
No.
So, the work that has been done so far has been done properly, as far as your role in this matter, correct? That's all, thank you. No more questions. I don't have any more testimony to offer at this point in time.
Okay. You know, why don't we take another short break? I didn't realize we're gonna be running this quickly. There's one thing I know, that you just talked about, Mr. Spengler, we need to admit exhibit eleven, which is a compilation of all of the correspondence between, it's primarily, uh, between Ann Gardner and Mr. Spengler. But it's important because it, I think provides context from how we got from January twenty-four, twenty twenty to today. And, uh, so I don't think there's any objection.
I don't know, there's no.
And so, um, and then the other thing that I wanna bring to the council's intention is, it's my belief under section five thirty-six point one, point nine, point, point oh nine oh, I think. Uh, don't know if we do that. Uh, that the council will be required to issue findings of fact in conclusions of law. Um, and that allows the agreed party, um, to be able to take that to the, the circuit court, and the circuit court actually knows what the basis for the decision of your municipality was. And so, I, Mr. Spengler and I have not talked about that. Um, I don't know, I would recommend, unless Mr. Spengler disagrees, that the, each party have a certain amount of time to submit proposal findings of fact in conclusion of law. Um, and then the city council can do with those whatever it wants. It can ignore them and do whatever it wants. Um, you know, start from scratch, or it can accept one or the other without any changes. Or it can accept one or the other and make whatever changes to that document if things are, what are your thoughts?
Well, here's my thought. And I, I wanna put this in record, if I let square where I live. One of the things that I was wanting to bring out in this nation is that, is unless the governor's, we're gonna talk about the governor's order. But unless the current order is extended again, then the state licensure for my client expires December thirty-one. I think it's kind of important for us all to understand that, that it's gonna have to be approved by this body and by that body at some time. So, if, one of the issues that I have is legal matter about the issue of whether this proposed suspension of the licensure is currently in effect or if it is staying because of the appeal process that is not only the governor's order, but the, the standards in simple cases about appeal, staying enforcement of the order, okay? So, and the reason that I bring that up is, this, this issue about timing, submitting findings of fact in conclusion of law. I mean, it's, I mean, I don't know if we can reach an agreement on that issue about whether the suspension is staying or not. I, I think that was an important issue as well as the December thirty-one deadline anyway, which proves we're, what, nine weeks out? Uh, from the, the state licensure going to be gone unless the governor's order is suspended. So, I, I think those are some topics maybe that we wanna talk about. I don't know if we can reach an agreement on that. I, I think it affects the issue about submitting findings of fact and conclusions of law that may, you know, take weeks or whatever to, to resolve with the suspension issue hanging over my client's head.
Well, I, 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 all I know is, is when I look at exhibit two, which I think is already evident, the October seventh suspension letter, it says in a, in a paragraph, this suspension is effective immediately, you're hereby directed to cease operations until work to bring the facility and your compliance is completed, and the license is reinstated. So, my reading of that is that there is no stay. And I think under section five thirty-six point one two oh of the Pacific statutes, there is no, there's definitely no automatic stay in this situation.
Well, when you're talking about state sanctions, we're talk, we're talking about administrative procedure and the municipal ordinance that does not have any provision, one way or the other about that. But I mean, we're not talking about a circuit court action right now. We're talking about what applies here.
But I'm, but I'm citing from the Administrative Procedure Act, which I think is applicable to what happened here. It discusses what happens in this proceeding, and then what happens afterwards, if anything, happens afterwards. And so, I think that it's talking specifically about whether or not an action of, taken by an agency to stay. Uh, but what's a state agency, council, which not?
No, I don't think that, that should apply to the procedure. That was not, that applies to state entities, the Administrative Procedure Act, plus actions by state entities, not municipal entities. I, I am hopeful that maybe we can learn something now about this issue, if we can, if we can. And to be honest, it's not, you don't want to have to go to the circuit court, trying to get this resolved without having to do that, living in these issues about the governor's order, whether it is a stay, any of those things, when we, we already know that we have a December thirty-one deadline, that the city is gonna have to prove it, or the state to prove it, and vice versa. So, that's, I mean, that is really what we're talking about here. And, you know, I, I think what we had discussed, at these meetings, I think, I know I've discussed with Ann, that what we're proposing to do is, if everything checks out next Thursday with the sprinkler system and the alarm system, that those, those parts of the hotel that are safe for occupancy can be licensed for that purpose. So, that, that is, until the end of, until the beginning of December. And then, if it hasn't passed code, then, then it's gonna be gone. The state's gonna take it. Well, and then I know that's gonna go along with it. Now, I didn't know where I was trying to get, but that's, I, I think they're all interrelated.
That's fine. I, I, the only thing I would say is, at least right now, especially on the record, I'm in no position to really provide any direction in that or no.
Well, maybe in this special, I really find my, the risk of the council is gonna make, make that issue, we aren't gonna make that. the definition, we are going to make that. But that's, that's where we're at. And I think, and again, that would be put in the correspondence that I had, and you were part of the city council meeting on April twenty-seventh, where, again, just to rehash where, why we're here today, part of the reasons, substantial why we, is we had a fire in January, right? And then we get the state's letter in March, and Mayor Katie's letter in April seventh. So that was six months ago, uh, not quite, six months, six months ago, in the midst of COVID, and it's in the record now, it's in the record at the time period, because the council members weren't here at that time. My client property was insured by the insurance company who denied them their coverage for their loss, which, why I asked this late for talking about substantial financial loss to them, because their insurance agent wrote them a policy of insurance, or an insurance company won't cover the type of firearm system they had at the time of the fire. And so now, we have had to file a lawsuit with the circuit court and the county to sue the broker who sold this policy when my client had given them a document that said, here's the system that we had, and then they sold them a policy for an insurance company that won't insure. So I, I think there are a lot of, I would at least hold them equitable concerns here about, we had a fire, we don't have insurance now, we have to sue over that, we've got COVID, we're given the deadline of October one, and I think, and I don't know this for fact, but it seems to be timing wise, when the mayor's letter of April seventh talks about a deadline of October one, that's because of this insurance letter saying that the license, the state licensure was going to end on September thirty. And so we've had all of these factors, we had to submit plans, we had to change, we had to get a sprinkler company, we got a sprinkler company, we've got employees out because we got COVID, the sprinkler system wouldn't have been done, but for that, we're going to have it done next week. And we've had all these meetings, I think we've had these suspensions that have gone on, and, you know, that's, that's really, I guess, kind of my submission to do is, I think the fair and proper thing to do here would be to allow the licensure to stay in place until the end of December. We're only talking about a situation again of another, you know, what are we talking about? I don't know, December, we're talking about nine weeks, nine weeks to finish up this project.
I thought that was true. It was.
I thought, I thought maybe that was probably an appropriate place for that.
Yeah, no, I think, you know, I, I hesitate for the record, I want to make sure that I protect the record a little bit, because a lot of the things that you were talking about, that's what's actually been coming to evidence. And, so, you know, I think, in order for the circuit court to really consider, again, if we get there, and I think we all hope we don't. So if I were to sum up, I'm going to say, you know, we, we, the city sent the letter on October seventh, twenty-twenty, it was signed by Peggy Bay, the acting finance director, she did then rely on discussions with Carolyn Shaw and, and the fire department department. And we heard from Captain Shaw, and he made very clear what the violations of the code were. I don't think there's any factual dispute at all, that they are not currently in compliance with the code. I didn't hear any evidence to suggest that they are. And so if you look at Peggy's letter, and you look at the ordinance twelve, section twelve, that's thirty-one, there's no doubt that they're in violation of the law, and therefore the suspension of the license was appropriate. If you, twelve, that's thirty-one allows a suspension or a revocation in this situation. And the city has suspended, not revoked. And the reason why is because the city is not looking to, it's not personal, they're not looking to end these individuals' ability to operate this business. They just want to, based upon the long history of violations that continue to the present. I mean, it's October thirteenth, they still have several violations. They just want to make sure that this place is safe. And I think that that's a real concern. It's a concern not just because we have several documents in exhibit nine showing violations over the course of multiple years, but they actually had a fire. This isn't theoretical anymore. They had a fire, and they didn't even sound the alarms. They didn't tell guests who were there that there was a fire. And there, in connection with the, the, putting that fire out, the fire department found multiple violations. And so the suspension was not without notice. This could not have come as a surprise. Daniel Shaw has spent an enormous amount of time working with the owners of this institution to make sure that they know exactly what the issue is, and that they have enough time and enough direction to fix it. And the timeframe that was provided for them within which they were to get this complete was reasonable. You know, we can focus on the April seventh letter that Mayor Katie sent, in relation to the deadlines that were contained within that letter, but the truth is, the fire happened on January twenty-four, twenty-twenty. It's been almost nine months, nine months, and they still don't have a sprinkler system or a firewall system. It's been nine months and they still don't have the fire damage area renovated. Now, I get it, COVID is a real thing, there's no doubt about that, and COVID makes things harder these days, but it, but it isn't. The fact that they're not in compliance now doesn't have anything to do with the fact that Marty Gray's company may have had some guys go out with COVID and delay the project by three weeks. The reason why it's not completed is because they didn't really take seriously how serious the city was about this, until we made that very, very clear. It took several phone calls and emails from Daniel Shaw to the owners to get that to sink in. In fact, if you look at exhibit eleven, which is the correspondence between Mr. Spengler and Ms. Gardner, there were multiple extensions requested just to get the plans in. And when they made the first extension request on May thirteenth, two days before the deadline had set forth in Mayor Katie's letter, their email correspondence attached to that request, and they still hadn't even gotten contractor yet. And so it's the fact that they waited so long to take care of these issues that have brought to their attention in a timely manner, that has them out of compliance now. And again, what, we're talking about life safety here. This isn't nitty-gritty. This is, this is, these are life safety issues at a business that's already had a fire this year. And I think the evidence demonstrates patience on the part of the city. I think it demonstrates compassion on the part of the city, because they're in a position to revoke this life, given everything that's transpired, but they don't want to do that, suspend the life, get it in compliance, which you've got a lot of time to do, and then you'll be up running again. So with that, I will request on behalf of the cities to do, that the council uphold the business license extension that's reflected in what, October seventh, twenty-twenty letter, Peggy Bay to the University College.
What do you think of that? It's possible the first thing is about it not being in the record. Exhibit eleven is in the record, that's your reserve. That's my letter to Ann on April twenty-fourth, which you, where I spelled out the fact about the insurance being denied and all. So that is clearly in the record, and we talked about the latter, okay? And then you kept making the statement about suspended versus revoked. It has a practical difference on my part, whether you want to call it a suspension or a revocation. Does it? The suspension means that, well, we're watching you, you can keep working, but a revocation means that you can't. So I don't understand that. I don't understand that argument at all, what that means. I mean, if you want to say and agree that suspension means they can continue to operate, the revocation means they can't, then I guess we're okay with being suspended? So I really wasn't, yes, I wasn't following you on that at all. But again, I, I think we had, she's right about one thing, I think we agree about a lot of them. We don't want to be in a circuit court, we don't want to have a fight about this, because if we go to a circuit court and you make a ruling, if we can't do business, we're losing income, okay? My opinion, I think you subject the city to outside lawyer fees, damages, maybe attorney's fees, I don't know, we don't want to do that. We don't want to have to go litigate whether the governor's order, which even Ms. Ingraham says in her letter, says that they can't, they cannot suspend the licensure through the end of this year, that the city can do something that the state can't. Don't want to fight about that. I, I think what we have made is a reasonable request. I don't disagree with the fact the council said, I, I think that, that the city has worked with us. So I think I'm taking what I'm said, and saying, I don't believe that, I do believe that. There are certain circumstances where you have a major renovation to a project, where you have to get plans done, and they have to be approved, and then you have to do the work, and as you can, Mr. Shaw, Daniel Shaw, this, this sprinkler system alone is a substantial financially, but the time consuming, when you're running through an old hotel, all these pipes that run, all these alarm systems, all these sprinkler heads, and we're, I, I think we're at the finish line next week, according to what Marty has told us, and we were all there. So, I mean, that, that's, that's my proposal, we don't have too much to go forward. Well, I hope the city doesn't want to go forward about this. And again, if we're talking about the extension to the December thirty-one deadline, again, the city has to have it approved by man, and the state has to. And if they don't, they're not going to have a license anymore. So I think that's a good thing for your job.
Mr. Counsel, do you want to take a short recess?
Uh, I think we're done.
Okay. Thank you.
But once, we do need to get on the record, what we're going to do about finding that all, I think as a law, they have to, they have to do it. So.
I, I don't know that that's required in the situation of what I have proposed about the December thirty-one deadline. I mean, if we can have an extension where we don't have an argument about, because that's a whole weather court case, about whether this suspension is staying because of the appeal in the filings of the circuit court, that's a whole nother ball of wax that's to court, that's inside. That's why I, I think the reasonable proposal for everybody is that we have an extension of the license to operate through December, because we know what's going to happen by the end of the month. The city's going to have to prove that the main states don't have, or not have a license. How about, how about this word proposal? The parties have the ability, but not the obligation, to submit a proposed finding, finding of fact and conclusions of law. And then, Mr. Spengler, you and I can discuss your proposal, and I can have discussions with the city, the appropriate people in the city, to see whether that adds any traction.
Well, but I don't think we can leave this without closing, you know, we have the hearing, they've got a major decision. And so I think we, we put that deadline out there, that gives us plenty of time. Well, if something happens in the interim that we don't anticipate, then maybe that alleviates the need.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, I've seen the council's program have a decision, or not a decision before, in days, but if we have an agreement, licensure stage is set through the end of, of December, there's no need for us to file findings of fact and conclusions of law for a circuit court case, it's not a hat, because this, because this whole hearing becomes moot if we have that agreement.
But I don't know this right now. I, I see what you're saying, and I'm not saying that, that, you know, I understand your position, and I don't like you bringing it up, but, but I just don't think right now is the right time to do, to, to address it, unless that's to believe your seat, in which case, they might be able to address that in an order. What you're asking for, I think, is basically some sort of a settlement that I think would take place between your client and the city itself, which would then have to be approved by city council at some point later in order to be enforceable. And so that would, that, that would have to involve discussions between you and the city before the city council could even address it.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I think they are the decision makers, but I, I'm willing to go, I'm willing to give, that is our proposal for resolve. This hearing is if we have an agreement, the license remains good through the end of December, then this whole hearing becomes a moot point, because I, I've stated it on the record. Now, that, that's our proposal, which I, I think is a fair and reasonable proposal under all the facts and circumstances that we have. But I mean, that's what, that, that'll be a support case, we're not going to be in fight about the governor's order, paying lawyer fees, and all those things. But that's, that's what I think for a resolution is. And maybe we can get to that tomorrow. I certainly think that's, before we go down the road, more lawyer time for my clients, for the city, that they're going to be charged, that for findings of fact and conclusions of law, and anything that's probably disordered.
So is it appropriate for the council to go a closed-door session and have discussion?
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So at that time, we would have Ann apply with us?
I think I, by conduct of hearing, I think that's not me.
Okay. Okay, so Ann?
But we're not, if we adjourned the closed door, we're probably not going to come back out and have a pronouncement tonight. So I want to let Ann be able to go home and everybody know it's not essential.
So we have a motion to adjourn to closed-door session?
So moved.
Okay. Call please.
Lemon?
Yes.
Open?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Roberts?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I was just, I was behind.
I just thought I was just behind.
We're waiting.
Yeah.
Council, would you like any staff to speak? Mr., would you like any staff to speak behind, other than Ann?
Um, if I got-
Yeah, I think they're, they're good, yeah.
All of those exhibits are out, so if you all want to look at them, I mean, they're the-
Oh, Chris, do you want to go first?
Yeah, I can get rid of the video meeting.